It is six o'clock, so let's call tonight's meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our town manager is requesting that we add an item to our agenda tonight, which we can do with a two-thirds vote. It's a senior center design grant extension, and I propose that it be added as Item D under Selectment Action.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, we'll add that as Item D. Next is public audience. Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Woodton Drive. I would like to thank the Scully's owners of the Ensign House for being so gracious to me and giving a tour of the house. The Scully's are the most passionate people in their task of renovating the Ensign House. However, the inside of the building has been gutted by the past owners, Webster Bank, leaving very few relics from the past. The building will require significant capital to renovate from many challenges on the way to a successful conclusion. The task that the Scully's have undertaken, in my opinion, is a field of dreams where viability is elusive. The Board of Selectmen should not be swayed by the passion of the owners, but take the responsible task to evaluate their fiduciary responsibilities to the taxpayers. It appears that the Board of Selectmen in giving the abatement has not thoroughly studied the impact of an unknown financial impact on the owner's unknown business plan and financial impact on the taxpayers if the project cannot be completed is pure folly. The real estate company that sold the property to the Scully's defined the mansion at Chitham Hill with the history of Ensign House and the opportunity for redevelopment. It stated the house is listed on Historic Registry and has approval for mixed-use development of the existing building and surplus land. The uses include multifamily and hotel as well as specialty uses such as bed and breakfast, health, spa, wellness. The property is in the center zone encouraging flexibility of use. The Ensign House has 18,000 square feet of space to renovate with many restrictions and costly environmental issues. The waiver of fees from the Water Pollution Control Authority was denied, and they maintain their independence. This project is presently in its infancy with only one tenant that appears to have the restaurant on the first floor of the house, increasing their seating and providing a banquet facility as an adjunct to their restaurant. There are many unknowns with the expansion of the restaurant. The Board of Selectmen has taken the decision from other sources with different responsibilities and authority that is not responsible for the fiscal impact on the taxpayers to make their decision. There appears to be a lack of financial information from the owners and the cost-benefit analysis that would impact the taxpayers. I would urge the Board of Selectmen to rethink their analysis for an abatement, which appears to be using taxpayer revenues to become partners with a passionate owner that could use an injection of capital into an extremely expensive project. I would suggest that the Board of Selectmen table the abatement until there is more financial information forthcoming. There should not be a rush to judgment. Time allows the Board of Selectmen to review the entire project from all aspects of the development and come to the conclusion that does or does not benefit the applicant and the taxpayers. It appears the financial risk is not only with the Scully's, but also with the taxpayers, who are also looking for lower taxes, lower mill rate, that are defined by the revenues and expenditures in the town budget. In my opinion, the Board of Selectmen should not approve the abatement that has many unknowns on long-term viability. The risk should be with the developer, not the taxpayers. Over the years, there's been -- okay, that's the end of my discussion on that. Over the years, there's been discussion on Simsbury Golf Course, losing money year after year. According to the Finance Director, Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund ended 2017-18 with a net release to fund balance of $229,037. It goes on to say, "Further discussion will be had during the budgeting process to identify the cause of the recurring losses and potential resolutions." Now is the time to discuss the renovation management of the Simsbury Farms Golf Course. In keeping with the concept of going forward with potential resolutions, I had a discussion with Bloomfield Town Manager, Phil Shank, since Bloomfield Gomp, Wintonbury Hills Golf Course, has been managed by Billy Casper Golf Management, BCG, since July 1, 2003, with good results. I spoke with Phil Shank about the challenges that lie ahead with a decrease in play and decrease in revenue over the years. I asked if I could have a copy of his contractual agreement with BCG, which he has forwarded to me with a copy to Town Manager Maria Capriola. The BCG manages and maintains all activity on the golf course, the procurement of materials and equipment purchased with value of scale of their resources. There are monthly meetings with town volunteers and town staff. All files generated under the management of BCG are transparent and open to the public. I would suggest that anyone interested obtain a copy of the 36-page contract. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, News Feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Joan. Would anyone else like to speak in public audience tonight? Okay, then we'll move on to presentations. We have one presentation tonight from the Bike Pedestrian Master Plan. The master plan is going to be used to guide and prioritize projects over the next 10 years as our town continues to invest in its bike and pedestrian infrastructure. To do the presentation is Tom Roy, Director of Public Works, and Marcy Miller of Fitzgerald and Halliday. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you said, I'm here with Marcy Miller. She's a senior project manager with one of our local planning firms based out of Hartford, Fitzgerald and Halliday. We started this project a little over 18 months ago with the selection of Fitzgerald and Halliday, and part of the reason we selected them is they've done a number of these planning efforts for bike and pedestrian activities throughout the state, so we're really looking to build a little bit on our own history along with their experience. The big question is, why would we want to do a plan like this? What does it really get us, and what's in it in terms of the investment? It begins with building upon what we've spent so many years doing. I think we've been in the bike and pedestrian business for about 30 years in terms of where we can track and see some of our significant efforts, including building the trail along Iron Horse Boulevard and really beginning the Rails to Trail Movement here in the state of Connecticut. You know, we were some of the first people to build these trails, and I think we've really benefited from those efforts. We want to promote walking and bicycling and the fact that it adds to the quality of life and the economic benefits that come with that quality of life. We want to establish three, five, and 10-year goals. We want a roadmap to where we need to focus our efforts over the next decade.
All right, so we started with quite a bit of community outreach and input. One of the first things we did was establish an advisory committee here in town, and we looked to the existing bicycle and pedestrian committee that exists and to the public and business owners and people that simply walk and ride in town. And they were tasked with doing a number of things for us, providing insight on the local conditions. This is what we called our needs assessment, brainstorming ideas with us on how to move forward, reviewing and commenting on the plan, which they've done, and helping raise awareness of this project. The best plans are the ones that don't sit on the shelves, so we want them to help us move it forward. To reach the public, that was really big, too. You know, we have a great trail in town, but you know, how do we get to that next level? So we wanted to do a lot of regular community outreach, and we developed a website, which we put on the town website. We did a business card and a brochure, you know, just some marketing materials that Tom's going to hold up, and we went out to the public. We went to Fitzgerald's, we went to the Spooktacular Fest, and we just talked to a lot of people where they're already out with their kids, and we heard a lot. In addition, we did an online survey, which over 900 people, almost 900 people responded to, a really great number, which we'll talk more about. So, the first thing we did with our committee is, we need a vision. We need something to build to and to measure our recommendations against. So this is, what do we want Simsbury to be as it relates to walking and bicycling? And we came up with expanding an ADA accessible network of sidewalks, greenways, trails, all these other great things. And we want residents to have an improved quality of life. You know, we want this to come back and benefit the residents in town, and that includes things like public health and economic vitality. We know that there are trail towns out there that their businesses do better because the trail goes through their town, and we want to capture a little bit of that. So, how do we get to that vision? Well, we thought there were about six categories. You don't need to read this, you can go and look on it, but it comes down to safety, connections, education, the economics, which I already mentioned, branding and wayfinding, which the town has already started to do some of, and then maintenance. How do you prioritize what to maintain and how much? All right.
Okay, as Marcy said, our goal was to listen to the community, and let me tell you, we heard a lot. We got a couple of quick quotes here from some of what we heard at the pop-up events, and a big part of the pop-up events was to get to listen to some of the people we don't hear from every day. The one I liked the best is under the lighting. Lighting's terrible, however, it's one of the charms of Simsbury. What do you do with that? We'll talk a little bit more about that later. As so many of you sitting up here have heard, year after year, there's conflicts between cars and bikes, there's conflicts between bikes and pedestrians. Nobody seems to be upset with the horses, so we're good on that multimodal, but everything else, you know, it comes down to learning how to share. Enormous amount of feedback on sidewalks. I'll be honest, it was one of the things that really surprised me about, how many people wanted to see sidewalks, and part of that was then to determine where is the right place for sidewalks in Simsbury. Marcy?
So, I mentioned, almost 900 responses. How cool for a town of 24,000 people. And then we thought, they can't possibly all be answering from Simsbury, or there has to be people answering multiple times. And so we went and we looked at a lot of the data, and we asked for zip codes, and it was an optional thing. Two-thirds of people provided their zip code, and of this, over 90% were Simsbury residents. So that's over half of your respondents were from Simsbury. And most of those people use the trails, which is really cool, so the input that they were giving us is valid. So, the one thing that we thought was really interesting is, in addition to that, is over half the people are already driving to their trails. So when we started getting at the sidewalk needs, people were saying, "We want to get to the town center, we want to get to the community facilities, we want to get to the trail." So those are the things that we started to put together. In addition, we learned that 47% said they don't feel safe walking and bicycling in Simsbury, and that we found that a little bit shocking, and we wanted to dive deeper into it.
It gave me a lot of pause, and I tell you, because again, we all feel Simsbury is a safe community. We have a great police force, and it kind of got into what does that number really mean? And it gets into, in some cases, the difference between safety and security. It gets into the fact that somebody may not feel safe bicycling because they're worried about the potential of vehicles. It gets into wildlife encounters and some of the discussions that this board has had in the past. And so again, it was a high number, but when you dove down deep into what it means, it wasn't necessarily that people weren't going out of the house because they were scared, it was that they had concerns.
So, I'll tell you some things that came up. Bears, and bears, and bears.
And big bears.
Which we can't address in this plan. And you know, that's something that we have to acknowledge, that some people are going to find an excuse or a reason to not exercise, and that's not a market that we can capture. So what we really want to address are the things like, okay, is there conflicts with traffic that we can avoid? And that's when we start getting into some of the details.
I thought this was the Bike Pedestrian Bear Master Plan, right?
Don't, yeah, when I was in Yellowstone last year, they had the shirts that had the people on the bikes, and it said, "A bear's version of Meals on Wheels," so we don't want to start that here.
Those were different bears.
Different bears, much bigger. Just a quick snapshot of where some of our existing infrastructure is, it was kind of the focus in the beginning of where we started looking at this project. Here we are out front of Fitzgerald's.
So, we had to break down all the information that we got, and what we did is, we did a data tally, and every time someone mentioned a segment of a road or a quarter, we gave it a tally. We tallied, and we tallied, and we tallied, and then we weighted them based on how many times this section was mentioned. We also added in a number of other factors that we had access to. We looked at your plan of conservation and development. If it was something that was mentioned in there, we gave extra weight to it, because it's already been studied. We also, we keep hearing connections to destinations in town, that got extra weight. Connections to schools, that got extra weight. Are there crashes there? Could there be a safety problem? That got extra weight. And then finally, we have access to STRAVA, which is a ridership data and a walk data. It's mostly recreation-based. It has some minor flaws, but it's a good tool to understand priorities, and so we looked at that, and we tallied things that had high STRAVA data. So, what do we come up with? Well, it looks like almost every road is highlighted, but that's not quite the case. It was really just your main thoroughfares, and we have, these were our top 10, and the most important thing to note here is, they all have different reasons for being the top 10. Some need better crossings, some need sidewalks, some need, you know, better bike facilities. The important thing that I want you to notice here is, a lot of these are state facilities that have extra complexities when you work, you have to work with the Department of Transportation, but some don't, and when we thought about prioritizing quarters, we did take this into consideration.
Okay, I guess the question is, now let's talk about what the next steps are. Everything, for me, comes down to balance. All of the projects, even though they may have been given a high priority, have varying costs, timeframe, different ease of implementation, as Marcy mentioned, those ones on state facilities, and that's part of where the work really is in terms of making this plan a useful document. We talked earlier about lighting, and lighting is a great example, where people had it as a high priority, but as we looked at things like lighting up the trail, when the trail went in, we made commitment to all those abutting property owners that it was going to be for daytime use only. We have a plan of conservation and development, which again, we like the fact that we're a rural community, and we like the fact that we have dark skies. So although it was mentioned frequently, when you do a deeper analysis, it doesn't rise to a level of something that we would recommend. Just makes one good example.
So, our recommendations can be broken down into three main categories. The first is policies and programs. The second is network and facilities, which we already started alluding to with all of our connections talk, and finally, the third is signage and wayfinding. For policies and program, our top recommendations, we had four of them, one was a school bicycle program expansion. This is something that the town has done really, really good work in, but we do know there are some gaps, and particularly at the junior high level, that we might want to continue to expand. Finally, bicycle friend, not finally, bicycle-friendly business program. This is something that the League of American Bicycleists is putting a lot of emphasis on lately. We have three in town. Are there opportunities to work with them to get them to either go for this recognition, help improve their facilities around their area so it's less of a burden on the town? Safety and crash monitoring. UConn has a great crash database that, you know, as a consultant, I look at on a regular basis, but is there an opportunity within town to start analyzing that crash data and tracking it as you move forward? And trail users account programs, same thing. Capital Region Council of Governments has a program. Could you coordinate with them to have more influence on the locations and the timing of counts in your town? Network and facilities, it's all you.
Oh, man. When you look at some of the high priority recommendations and some of the stuff that we're already working on, I think the most important is the connection to Tarifville, which, you know, it's essentially three projects, which are in three different phases. The other thing is improving the signalized intersections along Hot Meadow Street. We have a grant project for that right now, and that work should be going on this coming summer. Firetown Road sidewalk installation, that was one of the projects that we had applied and unfortunately were unsuccessful at a grant recently with the Capital Region Council of Governments. And then we're really looking to target, and we had some great input from our advisory committee on this, some of our elderly within the community, some of our disabled in the community, making sure that we have ADA-compliant crossings, and we're going to hear a little bit more about that in February when we present the sidewalk study that deals with both where there are sidewalks in town, the condition, and also the ADA ramp upgrades that are associated with that. High priority recommendations, Marcy?
So, these are also high priority recommendations, and we took these one step further, and we did a series of concept plans for these, and these are just a broad overview of what these could look like, where we basically take a Google map, and we mark it up, and we show what could be, and highlight some features, and we worked with the town to come up with some of the top things that might make sense. Something she'll notice is, a lot of these relate to crossings and access and sidewalk installations, so Tom will go through one in more detail.
And I always like when we talk about concepts, that it is just that, it's a concept, it's not necessarily going to look that way. But one of the things that came up, and we all know how big the Fox Ten neighborhood is, it's difficult to get from the Fox Ten neighborhood to downtown. You have a twisty, high-speed state road, and if we were to make, and this is just again a concept, because it's not an easy one, but if you were to make a connection with a trail to Cedar Hill, there'd be property acquisitions, again, it's not easy, and you could now connect all of those kids to the high school, you're a mile and a half to the center of town along a trail that's already established along West Street, and then from people traveling up West Street along this trail, you're now getting access to Simsbury Farms all the way over to that end of town. So you can just see, it's a small connection, but it could make an enormous difference for the people in that neighborhood and really allow a whole new level of walkability, a mile and a half to the center of town. I could do that.
And I think the important --
We'll just run our bike through the golf course.
Well, and I think the important thing to take away from this is, this has its challenges. It's a high priority item, but we also put it in a longer timeframe, because we know it's not an easy thing, so that high priority doesn't mean it's going to happen in three years. It means you need to start thinking about it soon to perhaps get it implemented in a longer timeframe.
But if you don't take the time to kind of look at the what-ifs and what could be a decade away, you're never going to get there. So, some exciting possibilities. Traffic calming, it's something that within engineering planning, we talk about all the time. It's something I'm sure all of you have had, complaints from constituents about the speed of cars, and how do we slow people down in our neighborhood? Everybody loves to think a stop sign's going to do the trick. Generally, every study reads that stop signs don't slow down traffic. They don't necessarily make everybody safer. This, and I love the fact we're labeling it as a toolbox, it is a bunch of options which the town can consider for various applications. One of the things that we need to talk about with this is, how does this relate to our public safety and our first responders? What does this mean to getting a fire truck into a neighborhood? But as you look at this, it's becoming the norm, that a lot of towns and communities are implementing things such as this in order to make sure that our neighborhoods are a safer place to walk. We talked a little bit earlier about sidewalks. To me, once we get within a residential neighborhood, I don't think we should be on sidewalks. I think we should make sure the traffic and the pedestrians can interact safely, and part of that is making sure that we're at reasonable traffic speeds.
As far as signage and wayfinding, well, we definitely, our committee was really helpful in this, and the town has begun implementing some really great signs, which you see on the left there. We call this wayfinding because it's directional. We love, and our committee loved, this more general town branded signage. What they didn't love quite so much were the ad hoc signs that get placed all along the trail. And in fact, you have an ordinance here, but it's really, really hard to implement. And, you know, sometimes it takes going out with a camera and just seeing all the offenders and documenting, but the one thing our committee told us is, this really does take away from the charm of Simsbury. So if we can rein that in a little bit, and then maybe move forward with some of continuing to implement the other stuff, you know, it's not that hard.
And part of even a few years ago, when we put up some of these signs, and it's a shame, we didn't put the one that says, you know, "Local Business District," we do also want to get people off the trail and come over and take a cup of coffee, maybe buy a drink, buy lunch, and really use the signage where it's appropriate to drive the economics. In terms of implementation, it's always the challenging part, but it comes down to budget priorities and timeframe. We did not set this program up so that it was a single individual project. These are possible projects that would be presented generally through the capital budget process over the next few years, and just as with the POCD, there are different stakeholder groups with responsibilities for a number of the different recommendations within the plan. Facilities maintenance, just real quick, everything comes down to, we like to build, but maintaining can be the difficult part. One of the things we talked about is establishing a set of trail classes to say, what are our expectations along our highest-use trails? What type of amenities should we have? And again, within the plan, we said, you know, the highest end would be a linear parkway. You'd expect to have the grass mowed weekly, there's plantings, there's flowers, there's trash receptacles, which again, it's a business decision as to whether that's something we want to have. A Class A linear park is a destination trail. That's something we build and maintain in order to get people to come to Simsbury, as opposed to riding or walking in another one of our neighboring communities. Class B trail is very similar to what we currently have in terms of our maintenance along our greenway, right on down to, you know, some of our natural surface trails. And there's a right place for each of these, and again, it's setting the right expectation for our trail users. Maintenance policies going forward, we're going to be working on making sure that we're maintaining things at the right level. We're working very closely with Parks and Rec, and again, just setting the right level of expectations.
Thank you. I understand a robust set of trails contributes to economic development, but were there specific recommendations in here around how to get people off the trails in particular?
Well, a lot of the general wayfinding signage, it works, and a lot of it's word-of-mouth. You know, another example that I'll give you is like Nyack in upstate New York. It's a very similar community, and it's a little bit of know-how, it's that general signage, and people come here to stop for lunch, and then it's, you know, having some parking for them to safely be able to get to. So it's a combination of a couple of different things, but that is honestly Simsbury's thing, you know? You have the recreational riders who are taking day rides, so anything that you can do to continue to capitalize on that is really good for your businesses.
So, other questions?
Did you have any discussion about safety on the trails with regard to different users? Because I know sometimes you'll see somebody with a baby in a carriage, people walking a dog.
Dogs on the leashes.
And then you have racer biker, you know, and, which is all appropriate uses, but sometimes they all come together where, particularly down like on Iron Horse, where
Yeah, where you now have a bike lane on the road.
I know, even though we try to steer some of the bikers off onto the road, that doesn't always happen.
And I think a lot of this comes down to a level of common courtesy balance, where if some of our road networks, maybe if we're able to, one of the things we talked about was when we striped the roadways, right now, we stripe most of our town roadways at 12 feet, between the white line to your right and the yellow line to the center. There's no reason we can't follow what the DOT has started implementing, which is 11-foot lane widths, which gives you a little bit more room in the shoulder for cyclists and walkers, which may then allow for people to feel safer off of the trail on those fast racer bikes that you ride, Cheryl. And the other thing, just while we're here, I just did want to say, we have a number of people from our advisory committee here, so just maybe a quick hands up to show everybody who helped participate in this program.
I was just wondering if there's anything, I don't know if it's signage or something else, to put some of those common courtesy rules, you know, stay to the right, notify the people in front of you, you know? Notify the pedestrian.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, my thought --
I know, they are, but --
So, bicyclists, if the road facilities are good, they would often, if they're going fast, they would often opt to be away from the people with the dogs and the leashes, because they're the most dangerous, and that was a big complaint that we heard, is the people with the dogs and the leashes that are taking up the whole trail and are a little unpredictable. So, and you've kind of started to address a lot of those conflicts where you've created the parallel bike lane on the road, so you'll get there. I would say signage is a really hard thing, because you already have a lot, and it doesn't always get read, you know? If it's not going to really change the behavior, maybe we shouldn't do it. So it's, some of it can be like more of a campaign that could potentially work.
I think we did another thing. We did contact Farmington, they had a program for their police department in terms of having people out on the trails, and some of that is included in the master plan. But I also think there are some trail ambassadors as part of the trails groups in town, and again, I think that in some ways can reinforce that positive behavior.
Other questions? Okay, thank you so much, and thanks to everyone in this room, and those of you on the advisory committee not in this room, for lending your time and expertise to this. Love that we can take a strategic approach to planning these projects. Great.
Thank you.
Moving on now to the First Selectman and the Town Manager's report. As 2018 comes to a close, I reflect on Simsbury's first year under our new Board of Selectmen Town Manager form of government. To say the least, it's been a year of transition, with the hiring of Maria Capriola as Simsbury's first town manager, and the hiring of four new department heads overseeing the Police Department, Planning, Finance, and Parks and Rec. Over many years, Simsbury has developed a well-earned reputation as a town that's well-run, but I've also appreciated that with new people come new ideas, especially around management practices that help ensure our town is the most professional, efficient, and well-run organization that it can be to serve our residents. And I want to thank this board in particular for working in such a collaborative manner this year, and I feel like the team's in place for 2019, and really good things are ahead. At our last meeting in November, the Board of Selectmen unanimously adopted its priorities. Those priorities include infrastructure improvements, such as things that we've been seeing tonight, improved cellphone service, especially in our downtown. Other goals center around financial management, improving transparency, and identifying opportunities for the town to work more closely with the Board of Education on shared services. Other goals speak to quality of life, including improving transportation options for seniors. You can find more details on these and other goals, there's a link right on the Board of Selectmen's webpage, and on the version that's emailed out, there's a hyperlink I included. The Economic Development Commission has been and continues to be a major priority for me and this board. I believe that sensible economic development can expand our tax base, taking pressure off of residential taxpayers. In late November, we had our first meeting with the New Economic Development Commission. Selectwoman Cheryl Cook and I attended that meeting, and we shared this board's priorities. The new EDC will be focused on four areas in particular, including identifying business incentive programs that make sense for our town, developing a roadmap of economic development priorities, refreshing branding materials, and developing a business visitation program. On the cellphone service topic, a small cell tower has been installed at Maple Tree Cafe, not near the cafe. The tower is a small device which has actually been attached to the top of an existing light pole. The installation was made on behalf of Verizon. The device should boost cell coverage in the center of Simsbury. And similar small cell towers have been installed already across from Simsbury High School and off of Winslow Place. It's something that I know I and other board members frequently hear about, is the quality of cell service, in particular in some of our business districts. The Board of Selectmen has identified this issue as one of our 2019 priorities, so it's something that I will keep people informed on as we continue to make progress. An update from the Planning Department. The application for redevelopment of One Old Bridge, otherwise known as the Betty Hudson Property, has been filed with the Zoning Commission. The plan will be discussed at a public hearing that's scheduled for January 7th. A zone change was approved on December 3rd by the Zoning Commission for the Tennis Center property, that's 241 Hot Meadow Street. The existing industrial zone designation was changed to business in order to promote reuse of the vacant office building. And lastly, Simsbury Trail News. I'd like to offer my thanks and congratulations to all of those who were involved in our bicycle-friendly community application. We got word from the League of American Bicycleists that Simsbury will maintain its silver status for another four years. Across Connecticut, there are nine bike-friendly communities and only, whoop, nine bike-friendly communities and only Simsbury and New Haven have achieved the silver status. Out of the state's 11 bike-friendly businesses, three of them are right here in Simsbury. This application, I can't overstate it, it fills a three-ring binder, and I'm so appreciative of the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the volunteers, and the town staff, thank you, who work cooperatively to make this possible. And it's a testament to the work that's been done to encourage cycling, improving infrastructure, and improving cycling safety in our community. So with that, let me turn it over to Maria with the Town Managers' Report.
Thank you. Good evening. As Eric mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we do have an addition to the agenda this evening. I apologize for just getting those materials to you right before the meeting. We were receiving documentation from the state, that is, the granting agency, as late as this afternoon. So they did ask for us if we are willing to submit the extension, that we would do so by December 31st. And since this is our last meeting of the calendar year, there was a bit of urgency to that matter. So Jeff and I will leave off with an introduction when we get to that particular item and are happy to answer any questions when we get there. Time permitting, we would like to, Melissa and I would like to update you all on strategy negotiations with respect to our collective bargaining that is currently underway with our IBPO union. If we do not have time for that this evening, we can certainly look to schedule another time in the near future to do so. For departmental news and notes, just would like to commend all of our volunteers who hosted the first sensory-friendly Santa event on December 7th. We were told it was a great success. The event organizers are hoping to now make that an annual tradition. Cheryl was a volunteer. I heard she made a terrific elf.
I've seen the picture.
Very green.
Kristen and her team, as well as our Aging and Disability Commission and others, just a big thanks to all who participated in making that event a success. For those of you who might be interested in seeing pictures of the event, we have a link here that will be available for you. For Planning and Community Development, we just received notice from FEMA that they will begin their survey work in December for the flood map updates. Our Director of Planning and Development, Mike Glidden, was able to prepare some correspondence for us just today regarding that. And again, based on how recent that information was that came in, we've attached that to the Town Managers' Report, and we'll be able to make that information available online. Some good news to report from Public Works. The solar panel array for the DPW facility campus went live today. So that is a big step in that project. We are anticipating that this year alone will save about 40% of our electric costs for those buildings with an annual excess in savings of $11,000 per year. And we're anticipating it will produce over 134,000 kilowatts per hour per year. So again, a big thank you to the Public Works staff for having perseverance in that project and seeing that to fruition. For Special Events and Programs, from Culture, Parks, and Recreation, there will be extra public skating sessions available throughout the holiday season and the break from the school. We also will have a family New Year's Eve skate on December 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There'll be a reduced admission price, free hot chocolate, skate rentals while supplies last. So more information is available at our Parks and Recreation website. And lastly, from our Library Department, on Saturday, December 22nd, at 1:30, they will be hosting a Christmas Carol adapted and performed by Greg Oliver Bodine. It's a one-man play. It's a condensed version of the Dickens classic. This is an hour-long show. It's rated G and suitable for adults and children over 10 years of age. So we hope folks will be able to join the library for that program.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on now to Selectmen Action. Item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective December 17th, 2018, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $5,948.83 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item B is a proposed donation from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. The Hartford Foundation has generously offered to donate $4,000 to support Simsbury's food programs that assist residents in need. Our gift policy requires that this board accept any donation over $1,500. Is there a motion effective December 17th, 2018, to accept a donation from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving in the amount of $4,000 for the purpose of supporting the Simsbury Community and Social Services Department food programs?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Next is a donation from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming. They've offered to donate $2,500 to the Community and Social Services Department to assist residents who need assistance with food and utility or shelter costs. Is there a motion effective December 17th, 2018, to accept a donation from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming, Inc. in the amount of $2,500 for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department programs that assist residents in need?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Big thanks to the Hartford Foundation and Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming for those donations. Really wonderful programs. So Item D is the item that we have added to the agenda. It's a request for a contract extension for the Simsbury Senior Community Center Grant Contract, and hoping that Maria could provide a bit more information.
Yes, absolutely. So we had received a grant to do some design work on the senior center project, and we had a balance on that particular grant. So Jeff and I spoke. We made a request to the state to see if we could essentially reprogram the available funds that were left over, and if we could use those funds to help support renovations that were planned at Eno, the original capital project. There weren't sufficient funds to do all of the planned or anticipated work, particularly around things like the acoustical work and some of the sound improvements and some of the ADA improvements. So we were, or we are happy to report that they are amenable to letting us reprogram and repurpose that money. The grant would need to be extended. So the documents that we received, some of them as late as today, and we just received this notice from the state on Friday afternoon, would allow us, again, to reprogram that money. It would extend the grant. The state is requesting that we send in the grant extension documents by December 31st of this year. And we did also check with legal counsel, and Bob thought with the change in form of government, it would be prudent to bring the contract extension request to you all, essentially have you reauthorize now, me as the CEO, to sign those documents and move forward with the grant extension.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So first, that's pretty exciting news. I mean, this is money we were not expecting to.
Exactly, to be able to spend for those purposes.
Are there any questions? Cheryl.
Does the money apply only to the Eno project, or can you use it for other projects in other places? Or is that going to expend all of the leftover funds?
So, I have an answer, Cheryl. The money is, as you call it, was some of our gigantic grant.
Right, yeah.
In 2015, I believe. It primarily acquired the senior community center project, what we thought we were going to be building, such a facility. So no, it cannot be used for other projects specifically for design and, I guess, procurement for that particular facility, whatever engineering services, o-rings, you know, that type of work that would support that project.
So in other words, only at Eno?
Senior community center. So if, in fact, we decided to go somewhere else with it.
Oh, I see.
I believe we could use the funds for that.
And how long does the extension last?
Till September of 2019.
Oh, so.
And a reason for that, and I just wanted a little clarity, this is subject, the reprogram is really subject to state bond commission approval, which couldn't occur within the last nine months. We actually asked for this back in March of 2018. They kind of dragged their feet on it, and here we are. So I think, you know, in concept, it'll happen as long as we can get on the bond commission and get that action.
Actually, I'm really happy that it's going to be able to be used for the sound improvements and the accessibility issues at Eno. I think that's a great thing.
Speak my interest. So that means we don't have the money?
No, that means that we probably won't have to spend some of the town's money if this state bond action occurs. We've actually, again, these projects haven't been expended yet. We haven't done the full Eno renovations project. There's two pieces in, if you write down, the acoustical panels and the sound system improvements, which we have not completed.
So on Note 6, Fiscal and Financial Impact, to date, 140,000 of the grant funds have been expended.
Yes.
But we don't yet have the grant?
No, the grant, the grant is in place.
But it hasn't been bonded yet.
The problem was the way it was budgeted, there was some piece for design, and it was actually 100% design. It wasn't construction. So this is really design funds that have been expended.
I get that, but you mentioned bond commission. Does that mean that the bond commission needs to authorize the funds for us to get it, or we have the 204,000 sitting in the general fund?
My understanding is the bond commission has to act on the repurposing of the funds from design to construction.
But we have the 204 sitting in the general fund?
No, it's reimbursable grant, so we have portions of it, but not all of it.
So if the bond commission doesn't act upon it, then we're out the money?
We're out the 60-plus thousand dollars that we have, we're asking for repurposing.
Where does that come from if the bond commission has approval?
Well, we haven't actually spent that yet, right?
We have not.
But we will before we get approval, right?
We have town funds that are also appropriated that could pay for that under the Eno project.
It was my understanding that it won't cover all of the improvements.
And that's correct. So yes, we could pay for it if we had to with town funds. We have that money appropriated. But if we don't, you know, this was an opportunity to try not to spend that money and use the grant funds.
So we're spending it either way. This is just to save us money.
Well, well.
It makes a difference.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
If we're spending it either way, and this is a way to save us money, that's fine. If this is an additional appropriation on top of what we already anticipated, then we need to talk more.
No.
I would say it's not.
I would concur. I think, you know, my understanding of the senior center project, and again, that was part of my arrival, is that this was all sort of envisioned scope of work. So by repurposing these grant funds, it would alleviate us spending some of the town's investment in that capital project, but may also cover things that we wouldn't have been able to afford under the approved capital project while it was envisioned work.
Okay. Any other questions? Isn't the approved capital project done? Hasn't Eno been renovated?
Not entirely.
No. The kitchens and bathrooms, but not the remainder of the work.
I would defer to you on that. I'm not gonna.
The kitchens and bathrooms, that work was done, but some of the other work, like, again, the sound work, the acoustical work, were not done.
Because we ran out of money, or because it just hasn't happened yet?
There's a lot of reasons. Part of it's scheduling, to try to get the work done during the summer, and we could not get the material for the acoustical panels in time for summer construction. We also rebid that piece of the project to get a better price, and we saved about $5,000 by doing that. And again, we were kind of doing it on an incremental approach. Because of, you know, it was a historical building, we weren't absolutely clear what might happen during construction, what additional costs we might incur. Fortunately, that didn't happen, and we were able to move forward with the other phases.
So let me ask it a different one one more time. So of the original appropriation that we approved, are there any funds left in that account for these renovations?
Yes.
Enough to cover the renovations?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No, thanks for that clarification. That's helpful. Any other questions? Okay. So here there are three motions. Is there a motion effective December 17th, 2018, to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the Contract Amendment 2 from the State of Connecticut Department of Social Services to be in effect from January 1, 2014, to September 30th of 2019? Further move, can I put these together? Is that an issue? Further move to approve the attached resolution that authorizes the Town Manager to enter the contracts with the State of Connecticut Department of Social Services on behalf of the town of Simsbury, and further move to authorize the Town Manager to execute the State of Connecticut Ethics Form 1, 5, and 7 on behalf of the town of Simsbury.
Second.
I'm so moved.
You did.
Oh, I didn't? All right. Sure.
I was considering you as moving. Sorry.
Sure. So Cheryl seconded. Any further discussion?
We don't have any investment in Iran, right? We got to sign this Iran documentation to make sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I love state contracts.
Okay. Motion carries. Item E, we've got several public gathering permit applications. The first is the Simsbury Triathlon, scheduled for May 5th of next year. It's an annual event. One of the things the organizers are doing differently this year is offering a duathlon option with the hopes of boosting participation. Do any board members have questions about this application? They have their own insurance?
I don't believe they carry separate insurance. So, and again, if my understanding is not correct, and Tom is still relatively new, is that when this was set up, and the special revenue was set up some number of years ago. So we, as the town, we operate and manage essentially a special revenue fund specifically for this race. And then our Parks and Recreation Department contracts with a contractor who actually manages and oversees the race. So our staff is providing indirect staff support, but I believe it's covered under our KERMA liability policy. But I don't believe that there's a separate organization carrying separate insurance. But we could definitely confirm that, but I don't believe that's the case.
So we make everybody else get insurance. Why not them?
I do not know the history of that.
We checked out, it's KERMA. Melissa can probably better put our representative, but they agreed that it was covered, it was covered as a town program under our insurance. Again, it was set up after I left and before I came back, so whoever was here before.
I'm not picking on you. I'm not picking on you. But it's just, my whole concern is if somebody drowns during that race, I don't want the town on the hook for it. It's not our race.
We're assuming the financial liability for the race, so I'm assuming we're assuming the liability for the race.
And if we're contracting it out, I don't understand why we're not making that person pick up.
What we contract for is the race committee, the subcommittee hires a race director. That race director is paid out of the, out of those funds that they, out of the registrations and sponsorship collected and that kind of thing. So contract is maybe a loose term. It's maybe a stipend for the race director, but it's run like Simsbury Celebrates to some extent. It's like a town, it is a town event, town program, the way it is currently set up.
No, I get that, except, you know, we're not putting 200 people in the river.
Yeah, I can't look into that. You know, there's the, the application asks sort of open-endedly, are you, is it, we're utilizing town land or property for the event? Yes. If yes, you've got to have a million-dollar liability attachment there. I mean, so the insurance is entered into the conversation. Let's expand that, and the cost would be nominal if it ultimately has to be borne in the registration, so that's something we should pursue.
I mean, we're damned anyway. I mean, we're going to sit next to.
Well, we have it now. We have it now, but we can, because we have been part of other insuring events and most of, and which are, you know, we ended the market under the town, or various towns that participate in elsewhere. Ultimately, the organizations themselves bear their insurances, so we should look at that. Because this is not the same as Simsbury Celebrates, you know, it's not.
Yeah. A little more exposure. So would board members be in favor of tabling this item and asking the organizers to research that question?
Does it, how much does it, I would be in favor of doing that with, with the caveat that I may not say this time around, we need to solve for it, but it may be a future consideration needs to be solved for. I don't want to, I don't want to stop their energies and efforts around getting it organized and moving, but we should be expanding our thoughts around this.
As a policy decision, I would be more comfortable knowing that we have some certainty in this, like, we either are or we aren't. And where does this committee fall?
I think we do have certainty that, we also spoke to the, the, unrepresented at KERMA, we are sure it is covering the race.
I understand that, but.
No, I understand that. There's no doubt about that.
We don't want our insurance covered.
But that's assuming it's a town event, and this, this is not a town event. What you described is not a town event. It's a committee that's hired somebody to run an event using Simsbury's property, but the town itself has nothing to do with the organization of this.
I'm not sure that's true or accurate.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we're handling the, the registration department is handling the registration.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, we're handling the registrations, we're, we're processing all of their bills.
Okay.
Again, this was.
Well, that's what I mean, I just need more clarity about how this runs.
But, you know, there, we have the fiduciary responsibility for the, for the race. I mean, it is very much like Simsbury Celebrates. It's, it's run by a subcommittee, the fund, the funding and the bills are run through the town's finance department.
And the coordinator is acting on behalf of the Town of Simsbury. I mean, when you look at the event.
It's a subcommittee, yeah, on behalf of the subcommittee, yeah.
Right, but I think it's, let's, let's argue about this and carry this from the ten. No, but I just think that certainly if, if we, rather than just sort of assume that it's a, that it's a, rather than just broad-brush and say it's a town event, maybe we start looking at what the town events are and categorize them in a different way to just make sure that our liability is correctly covered as it relates to the character and nature of the event that we're sponsoring.
You said it much better than I did, though. Sort of where I was headed with this, is what does this mean?
This is the last year I'm comfortable with this being a town event. This should not be a town event. It should be a private event that uses town land, like every other event in this community, like half marathons, five Ks, et cetera.
Yeah, that's what.
We are not in the.
That's what I would have thought it would have been, in that, in that registration, you take a liability, you sign the waiver, and all that kind of stuff is covered in there, but.
Well, that's what I mean, as a policy discussion, I think we have to think about how we do this.
That's, that's fine, I mean, I don't disagree with you that it shouldn't be. The way it is currently run is very similar to another, I think we all consider Simsbury Celebrates a town event. It's run very similar to Simsbury Celebrates. I mean, it's.
But that's a true town event, and this is, this event is something that a few dozen people participate in.
I say, why not? I mean, it's not as big as Simsbury Celebrates, but the genesis of this was an extension of, of a strategic vision from Culture, Parks, and Recreation to promote Simsbury as a place that you can canoe, bike, and hike. I mean, it was an extension of a subcommittee who, you know, created this, and the fact that we don't have a lot of participants doesn't necessarily change that. I mean, if, if you're now going to look for a program manager who's going to become accountable for the insurance, you've just dramatically increased the complexity, as well as you'd have to find a different person probably to do it, so I.
I think, I think that what I asked for is to just determine, do we have adequate liability coverage to ensure any sort of eventuality that comes from this type of an event, versus just saying that it's broad-brushed, it's a town program, and it's, and the town's liabilities cover it, because it, it's not, I don't feel comfortable saying just that.
Well, they did check that. It's covered by KERMA, right? It might not be ideal, but the question is, is adequate? I mean, if, if the question is, is adequate coverage, I think that's been checked, right? We've managed this event under this structure previously. I'm, I'm open to a discussion of what's ideal. I'm not sure we can say that it's not adequate and it hasn't been verified.
But also, I, so the last statement, now clarity, I don't, I'm not, even with the spirit and the intent of the organization and why it was set out, set forth before, which I love and all that, I'm not necessarily in agreement that we should bear the cost of the liability of this type of event, that we can promote it, help organize it, push it forward. It's not difficult, though, to add, shift the legal responsibility of some unfortunate event away from the town and the majority of the taxpayers, who probably wouldn't be looking at covering this kind of event and that kind of eventuality for the very small number of participants that are in it.
And I think that's worth looking at, but I wouldn't hang up approval this year for that.
No, that's what I said. I said, let's do, if you heard, I said, let's, let it this year, not stop it, but make ourselves potentially understand these kinds of event for, on a go-forward basis.
Sean? So do we have protocols in place for river depth at the time of the event? Is there, I mean, are we working with the fire marshal to make sure that the river flows adequate?
Yeah, the race director, the race director in the committee works with the police department, and I believe we're also ordered into fire marshal. Again, I don't have a lot of experience with this one, but just from what I know of the race director and what I've looked in the files, they're pretty, they're a pretty thorough group on this. I'll defer to the planning, I mean, the zoning officer, she might, she might have more experience than I do.
I don't, because obviously it's my first year taking it over. What I will say is that their, their plan has been very well spelled out, it has in the past. I've sat on the committee as we've approved it. So they do coordinate, they have EMS down there, the fire department's down there, the police coordinate with the race. So from a safety perspective, they're definitely looking into that. I know last year it was brought up about, you know, the river.
The river was too high last year.
It was too high, so.
They shouldn't have had the race.
Yeah, so that is something that I can actually add a condition that talks about that on the condition of approvals, and I'm happy to do that if that would make you guys feel more comfortable about, about doing that.
Eight feet.
Okay. I think that's a little low. Eight feet?
At nine, that sucker is ripping.
Okay.
The river, and consult the crew team and the fire marshal, they know better, but that.
Like default to.
I'll talk to Mike, too, as a lead playing manager, he would probably know what would be a good safety.
That river is very deceiving for folks, and that's my, I spent a lot of time on it, and we made the, the crew team makes the call at a different level with an eight, with their launches. They all have protocols in place, the fire marshal has safety protocols in place. Again, if those are all in place, I'm comfortable with it, but folks that aren't experienced with, with our water table, that river moves a lot faster than it looks like.
All right, we can add a condition of approval for that, that's easy enough.
Great.
Okay. Are there other questions?
I'd just like to recap for, for clarification, just to make sure that I have all the takeaways. So, one, again, just reiterating, KERMA has said that the event is covered, but moving forward to look into picking up a special, special insurance coverage for this particular event if it continues in its current configuration, but also moving forward, doesn't make sense to continue operating the race in the configuration that was established a number of years ago, so we will look into that. And then the third takeaway I have is that we will add a condition of approval on the river height. So I think those are the three items we have.
People that know better than I do, I guess.
Yeah, I, this is what I want to do even more. I think what I really looking for is that we look, we assess this for the proper coverage, but also just in the sense that we, if the more types of events that fall into this as a town event, just make sure that we just don't, again, broad-brush it just because they are, then we just assume all the liability is there. Do we need to look at them as special in nature and what is occurring so that we have, yeah, that's the litmus test. Do we use our coverage and then add excess, or do we push it off as a joint responsibility? That's really what I'm, it's a policy, right?
Love it.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to approve the public gathering application for the twenty nineteen Tri-Simsbury event with the river depth condition that we discussed, and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit? So move. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next is the public gathering application for the Iron Horse Half Marathon. That, this one is scheduled for June second. The event also includes a five K and ten K option. It's been in place for sixteen years, this would be the seventeenth. Are there any questions about this application? Okay. Is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to approve the public gathering application for the twenty nineteen Iron Horse Half Marathon Road Race event as presented, and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So move.
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Finally, a public gathering permit application for a Beach Boys charity concert scheduled for August seventeenth of twenty nineteen. This would be raising money for the Boys and Girls Club. It includes a firework display at the end. Were there any questions about this application?
Are there any insurance?
Yes.
I'm more worried about the Beach Boys. We have not appearance insurance on this.
All right, is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to approve the public gathering application for the Beach Boys charity concert as presented, and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So move. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item I is the Simsbury Farms Golf Course fee schedule. As we know, the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund has been running at a deficit, and staff has been looking at solutions. And I'd like to ask Tom Tiberzki, Director of Culture, Parks, and Rec. to just highlight at a high level the fee schedule and the, the change that's being recommended, because it is a departure. Can I ask you to just step up to Mike? Thanks. Thank you.
So the major, we are making a significant change to the fee schedule of the golf course this year. What, we worked with the golf pro and some members, the golf pro and his staff, and some members of the Culture, Parks, and Recreation Commission, and what we're going to is called a one-rate system. It's very common in the pri, in the, with private courses, there's no resident and non-resident fee structure there. You, you walk in the door, you know what you're paying, nine holes, eighteen holes. There may be, you know, a special for the day with a cart or something like that. What we're, what other courses in the area are also, are, public courses are going to this as well. There's a course in Meriden that's, that's already gone to it, Rockledge Course in, in West Hartford is voting on it this month to go to the thing, to go to it as well. Golf is, is a challenging industry right now, as, as you all know, so people are looking at, you know, ways to get people in the door and, and market their, their courses. What we feel is that when people go to our website and they're, they're seeing this complicated rate, rate fee structure, when they call us and look for, you know, asking what the rate is, you know, are you a resident, non-resident, when are you going to go, are you coming in the morning, coming in the afternoon, are you coming on Friday, are you coming on Saturday? It's, it's really complicated. What we're trying to do is simplify the fee structure. So on a really high level, this just brings everything down. We're basically getting rid of the non-resident and resident daily fee separation. Everybody's going to pay one rate on the, on the daily greens fee. We are keeping the resident and non-resident season passes for at least another year. We're going to hold that rate, so if, you know, for our residents who, with, with the, as proposed, the fee, the resident fees, you know, as compared to this year, are going up on a daily rate, but if they wanted to buy a season pass, they're going to get that rate at last year's, the season pass rate at last year's rate. So they could still get a discount, you know, a subsidized, subsidized rate. And we projected we'll bring it, you know, barring, you know, another bad weather year, this should bring in a significant amount of, a significant amount of revenue.
So it's not only simpler to administer, but you're saying that it also has the potential to, to actually bring in more revenue?
Yeah, it's easier for us to market, you know, we're putting, if we're, when we're advertising or email blast out or, or advertising the paper, it's a lot easier for us to say it's, you know, golfing on, you know, forty dollars a hole on weekdays, and, you know, forty dollars for eighteen holes on weekdays, walking up versus thirty-six and forty, and, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever. It's just, it's just, it's not easy to do that, or, and it gets, people just get confused. And when they walk, from a customer service standpoint, when they walk in the door, for, for our staff who's trying to make everybody feel comfortable and feel welcome, when the first question they ask, you know, they, you know, like eighteen holes on a cart, and you ask if they're a resident or non-resident, you're already making them feel a little uncomfortable. And when you're asking a sixteen-year-old kid or seventeen-year-old kid potentially behind the counter to do that, it's, it's not the best situation, and to be honest with you, maybe they haven't been doing that for all those, all those years. You know, everybody's been paying the, the resident rate, more or less, so.
I've never, never been asked.
So, yeah, so what we're, what we're doing is really just.
What's that? You look sketchy, that's why.
So, so we're taking that all out of the equation, we're going to a fee, to a fee structure that is more in common with the rest of the courses, most of the private courses in Connecticut. There has, as you all know, there's been a course that's closed locally, so we're hoping to pick up business from that course, we're hoping to pick up some business from other courses that have been struggling and, and.
Okay, Sean? Just a question. So we instituted a surcharge per nine a couple of years ago?
Yes.
And that money's designated to go into the capital fund for the golf course, and the deal at the time was that we would no longer fund CNR on the Board of Selectmen budget, that mowers, et cetera, would now come out of that.
And we're being a little more aggressive with this as well, so that charge is going from two dollars to three dollars, so another fifty cents per nine is what we're looking for.
Right, so the increased revenue projections include the surcharge?
No, that doesn't include, the, the increased revenue was without the surcharge, it's just on the daily fee, just on the town's, you know, the revenue side of it.
Awesome, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You know, my thought would, my comment would be, I'd like to see the, the season passes increased each year.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's, keeping them frozen for whatever reasons, I can say, I'm sure you can justify that, but on the flip side, there's no way that the cost of operating that course doesn't go up each year, whether it's cost of chemicals, salaries, benefits, whichever.
Springboard system.
That should be, that should be addressed in the season, that season pass, so you've got, you had one significant, but you had three years, and then you'd raised it fifty dollars last year.
Yeah.
Let's.
My, my, I'll counter that. My, my feeling is that especially a year like this, the more season passes we sell, the better off that golf course would have been this year. We lost a lot of money on walk-ups with all the rain we had this year, so the more season passes we have sold, it better insulates us in those times of bad weather.
I don't, I don't doubt that, but any organization that I belong to, whether it's the airline organizations, everyone, whatever it is, each year you get a, an increase.
Yeah.
That's.
We felt, we, as a, the committee that we were working, the working group that we had on the, on the rates, we felt with the significant rate, significant rate increase in the daily fees, we felt was the right thing to do at this point to leave the rate, to leave the season passes where they were this year. However, it's ultimately, you know, higher, higher, higher decision than me, but that's, that's what we were thinking, is to give our residents, hold the, hold the rates where they were, so try to, try to really market the season passes as much as possible, knowing that there's going to be a significant increase in the daily rate this year, and kind of balance it off a little bit, so.
And I think this is going to be part of the larger conversation about how do we, even if we're not breaking even in that fund, how do we, you know, make golf lose less money?
Right.
I, I want you to sell more seasons passes. The individuals who, who are taking, who are benefiting the most from that golf course are the, the users, the consumers, the, the small number of consumers, those are generally going to be the seasons pass holders, so I think that they also should bear an additional cost increase relative to whenever it may be, also, not just the walk-up folks.
How does our season pass compare to surrounding public courses?
We're in line. I wouldn't say we're more expensive and we're not certainly cheap compared to.
You're in the middle?
We're in line, yeah.
I will test them, beginning, the, the fee structure is, is in line with others. But I don't think you, you benchmark it also just being, I mean, we're unique. We're the only.
Right.
Town-owned course in the area, so I don't think it's, it's okay for you as a reference point, but it shouldn't be your guide point. And we need to address the shortfall.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of, I mean, like Chris was saying, we have a lot of challenges other courses don't face. We have, you know, we have union workers, we have a tough location. I mean, it's a beautiful course, but for, for, we have only so many residents in town who play golf and they're, they're aging. And we're trying to draw people from out of town, but we're not an easy course to get to. We're not Rockledge, it's right off the highway. We're not all these other courses that, that people can just jump to very, very quickly. We have to really work to get people out here, so that's what we're attempting to do.
Well, now, my point was if we're starting at the top, then.
Yeah.
You know, you might not want to increase dramatically every year. But if we're still in the middle, you have some room there.
Yeah, we're, we're in the middle-ish, ish.
Yeah.
Sean? Just a quick question. So in the past, it's, it's come up that there's been Groupon's and two-for-ones and other things down there. That's not part of the fee structure? So how does that happen when we set the fees?
It's a good question, because I wasn't here when they set the Groupon's. But the Groupon's we sell, most, I'll tell you, the Groupon, just from what I've learned of it, it's been a really good deal for the town because a lot of those don't get redeemed significantly much, significantly so. So we, we've made.
Not arguing with it.
A significant amount of revenue on, on those, on the Groupon special.
But from a pure policy standpoint, the Board of Selectmen sets the rates and the Groupon goes against the rates that are set.
Correct. So the Groupon price in the future, I guess, would go up? That's what you're, is that what you're asking?
Or do we authorize the Groupon rates as part of this as well, just to keep it? I'm not, I'm not arguing it, just, but just to keep, because that's one question I get is.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that because it wasn't on the, it wasn't on the sheet from last year, so.
And that's technically a fee. I mean, we've got some time to do it.
Yeah.
I just, I'm sorry, I just remembered that I would have set it in advance.
Maria? Could just jump in quickly on that point. So it's not uncommon for parks and rec departments to run promotions or specials from time to time on various programming fees. Typically, what I have seen is that for the standard fee schedule is that the legislative body will adopt that. But then when it comes to things like promotions or sort of marketing specials, so that's usually done at administrative level. Again, it's just what I've typically seen. And I believe that's what's been occurring here, is that those promotions, marketing specials have been done at administrative level. But that the standard fee schedule is the standard fee schedule that's adopted by this body.
Again, not arguing with it, other than if we set the fees, how does anybody have the authority to deviate from the fees? If we're the body that sets the fees, how can the fees be changed?
Sure, and if we do have some comfort level, we could certainly ask Bob to sort of weigh in on that in terms of how that's been allowed. I certainly don't mind asking and getting that clarification. Just if it would make folks feel more comfortable, we can certainly do that.
I'm fine approving this. All I'm looking for is actually just to add in, and a Groupon specials is whatever it needs to be, just to keep, I don't wanna get involved in it. My point is that we keep every, so when we get asked the question, "Don't you approve the fees?", the answer is yes, we do. So there's no question, I guess, is, is my point. No need to hold this up.
Yeah, and first, I'll be clear, I'm a big fan of the move to the flat rate fee. And I appreciate the, your team and the folks on Parks and Rec Committee, you know, pushing forward this kind of thinking. And this is the start of us evolving and making this more viable.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo that, thank you.
Nice job.
Is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to approve the twenty nineteen fee schedule for the Simsbury Farms Golf Course as presented?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion passes. Thank you. Item I is the proposed tax abatement and fee waivers for six ninety Hot Meadow. I know this board is well-versed on this, but for TV cameras and public transparency, I just wanna give a summary of the project and where we're at. Six ninety Hot Meadow Street is the former Ensign Mansion across the street from First Church. It was recently purchased by a local couple who have a strong interest in historical preservation. The building is undergoing extensive renovations as we speak. The restaurant Metro Beast expects to move in early next year. There are also five apartments that are being built on the upper stories. The applicant has requested a ten-year tax abatement at percentages that over time slowly decrease. So it, the amount being abated goes down over time. They've also requested a fifty percent waiver of various fees associated with construction. At our last meeting, there was, I think, consensus among this board that we would be supportive of an abatement, but there was discussion about placing a cap on the total amount. We wanted to be thoughtful about what the total figure should be. So at our last meeting, we tabled this item. We've received an addendum to the application that's included in your packets where the applicant is requesting, if there is a cap, that the cap be set at five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. To put that in perspective, our assessor's conservative estimate of the value of the abatement is somewhat less than that, at four hundred and seventy thousand. Before we discuss this any further, I wanted to see if Mark or Eka wanted to just add anything. Okay, sure. So thoughts from the board?
I, I have a couple of thoughts. I've looked at this. I think that this is probably the, one of the few properties, if not the only property in town, that I think, to me, it's both a historical preservation issue. It's a gateway building going into the center of town or coming into the center of town, or leaving the center of town, depending which way you're going. But it really fits a lot of my, my criteria, and I think the good criteria that the town would have. I'm a little concerned about the, the high end, if you will, of, of that abatement. And I do believe in the paperwork that I saw. It still did have the WPCA waiver in there, and my understanding was that was coming out, so that would not, I believe that's not part of it. But I do think that overall, this is a good thing for the town. I'm looking forward to hear everybody else, but at this moment, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Other thoughts?
I'd like to thank Scully's for giving me a tour today. It really gave me a much better appreciation for the scope of the project and also for the care they are taking with a historic asset in the center of our town. And, and that, you know, was the reason that I supported this coming out of Business Development, because they are, they're doing important work over there, both preserving a building, putting in environmentally conscious upgrades such as permeable surfaces and other improvements to improve the environmental quality of the building. And we are supporting a local business, which now has the opportunity to expand and hire additional people on an ongoing basis and provide some mixed-use, both office and residential space. All of which check a lot of the boxes for me under economic development and our P O C D. So as I said, I supported it coming out of committee. I did support a percentage coming out of Business Development. However, I, I understand the comments I have received since then, both from this board and, and from the public regarding having certainty with regard to tax revenue, and I can appreciate that. So I am, I am open to the, to the other options, but I do support the abatement as a whole.
Thanks, Cheryl.
I'm not gonna go, oh, I think if you look at the last meeting tape, you know, about, you know how I feel about the project. But, so if we could move forward to, if I can ask a question about the options?
Please.
Sure? And in full transparency, I'm gonna make the excuse that this is for the people on TV, but in reality, it's me that needs help. Just walk me through, as a layperson, walk me through option C and the triggers and structured how we come to that and.
Yeah, Mark, could you do my stepping up to the mic?
By option C, you mean the optimistic scenario, is that right?
Yes, well, depending on how, what side of the project you're on, your position you're on, yeah, sir.
So the, if we wanna use these letters, then A would be the conservative estimate, the four forty-six is the amount of the abatement. The central is our best sort of good faith estimate of what we think as we project what, what future revenues will be and expenses will be and, and applying a methodology that we've discussed and understood with, with the town assessor. And then we say, all right, what if, what if the business really did well? What if they had a lot more private events? You know, they've got a nice facility for functions now. What if we were much more aggressive in managing expenses? If we hands-on did all the property management ourselves? And so just really taking, and even, and even for the apartments, you know, low vacancy rate, nice escalation in, you know, in rent. So it's the more, for us, the more optimistic scenario, that the higher revenue. It's not a pie in the sky. It's what we think is an attainable scenario, but it is the high end of what is a reasonable range. I think that was an attempt really to respond to a question at the prior Board of Selectmen meeting that, okay, we see there's a conservative estimate, a lower estimate. We don't see a range. So we really felt that we owed it to you to just give you a better understanding of what we think is a, a central, a median estimate, you know, a, a statistical median, you know, what's expected. And then what, what could it be in a, in a more profitable scenario?
Sean? I mean, given that this is a means for gap financing to help get the project off to ground, the more successful you are in the out-years, the less you need the abatement.
Right.
So that further compels me to cap it. Because we're, we're helping you out in the beginning because we wanna see this through. And the idea of the abatement is it trails off and the cap would, would kick in in the ninth or tenth year. And if it's doing that well, which we all hope it does, the abatement is no longer needed. The whole point of the abatement is to, is to help the project, right?
Right.
So if we essentially let it flow to five seventy-five or let it flow uncapped, we're essentially giving up revenue from a tax side that's not necessarily needed to finance the project. And again, nice folks, and we appreciate what you're doing, but we're potentially allowing a taxpayer windfall for success. Right? I mean, the whole point of abatements is to make projects happen when they otherwise can't. Once they're financially viable, there's no longer a need for an abatement.
That's true. But even when we discussed the percentage formula, it was heavily weighted towards the, the first two years, three years.
Agreed.
And, and much diminished in the out-years. But I totally take your point on that with regard to certainty in the numbers.
Again, and I'm, I'm very much as worded, but I'm just trying to be, I'm trying to be fair to everybody. And the Board of Finance is none too pleased that they found out that we are the body of this. I'm not concerned with that, but, because that's state statute. But, you know, again, we have twenty-six thousand people to think about.
Although the Board of Finance was comfortable with the abatement concept that we were talking about, including what came out of the Business Development Subcommittee.
Agreed.
I walked away from the last meeting, I think we all agreed on doing an abatement. I think there was a subset of us that were comfortable with the proposal. But I know that I was also comfortable that if there was a preference for a cap, to have a cap. So for me, the, the distinction tonight is a discussion on what the appropriate cap would be. I personally am comfortable with option B, in part because I bought into the initial proposal from the Business Development Subcommittee. I think obviously the purpose of a cap is, is not to have too much upside risk, but the purpose of having a cap is to have too much downside risk. So I kinda like looking at the revised number. I, I tend to move a little bit higher versus lower. So option B, which was the five.
Five seventy-five.
Five seventy, right, was the one that I, that I personally would prefer. For me, the purpose of this is not to determine what the break-even point is for the developer. I actually don't like abatements to be determined on what does it take to make a developer profitable? In our plan of development, what's unique about a structure like this is there's recognition that, you know, in particular, to promote the downtown and to, and to promote our architecture as a colonial community, that people simply are not gonna invest in historical structures unless you give them a viable reason economically and from an entrepreneurial point of view to do that. And so, you know, hence, I think the Business Development Subcommittee was comfortable that, you know, the entrepreneur assumes the risk on the upside, the town gains on the upside. And so for, for that purpose, I was comfortable with option B in terms of the amount, so.
I mean, I, so when, when we debated this before, and I appreciated everybody's thoughts, I mean, our, our authority on this is the assessor from a number standpoint. And our assessor is, in, in plain language, I do not consider this estimate to be conservative in that I no longer am concerned I might find a value higher than two-point-one million. So how do we go with any other number?
You're talking about like the four-seventy number?
Does that tie to four-seventy or five-oh-five?
That wasn't four-seventy, let me find the.
Yeah.
What page is that, Sean?
It's the assessor's memo on December twelfth. Again, I'm not, I don't want us to pick a number out of the air. I, I wanna go with the individual that's employed to assess our properties, I guess is my point.
Well, the staff's conservative estimate of the value the abatement schedules present is four-seventy.
I mean, I think what I'm laying it is, I think I said five hundred last time, right? And the assessor's giving me the middle at five-oh-five. David, I believe, said last time that wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility, was five hundred? That you wouldn't be necessarily, anything above that, you would be surprised, I believe is what you said?
Certainly something about, about that, there should be some leeway. It would actually, I was thinking that, you know, thirteen years from now, if somebody looks back and says, "The assessor didn't have a clue, he was way too long." It wouldn't be a bad thing, you know, because, I mean, the property was very successful.
Making my earlier point of the finance, it was no longer needed. Again, I'm trying to be fair to everybody here.
Yeah. I think where the, you know, where the exact number is, it depends on things that we can't foresee at the moment. But it's, you know, it's a lot of factors. But I think it's a, it's a policy decision, and I don't think anyone here in this room knows what the right number is. I would personally be supportive of the five-seventy-five as the cap. I don't feel like I, I need a cap at all, but if that's, if, you know, that's what it takes for this to be approved unanimously, I think that would be, that would be important. But that's just where my head is with this.
I just wanna, okay, I'm looking at, because Sean, I think you have a valid point, but I guess I'm not quite clear what, what the. A valid point, as, as you often do. I'm looking at the memo.
It's just in twelve-seven.
From the twelfth?
Twelve-seven.
Yeah. Right. And so I just wanna understand what actually is considered the conservative middle and higher end of the range? Because I'm looking at page, it's the one where the, where there's the chart.
That's not the assessor's memo.
Central and optimistic.
Central and optimistic. And so the central is the five-seventy-one, six-ninety. The optimistic is six-eighty-seven, oh, twenty-three.
The five-seventy-one is not the assessor's memo.
Yeah, the central was from the applicant.
Right.
The assessor's memo is the next one. Which gives you an abatement cap of four-seventy, five-oh-five, five-forty, and five-seventy-five applicant requested. The five-seventy-five is the highest number on the assessor's schedule.
You're right, yep.
Yeah, I believe the assessor has actually increased his conservative number from that report to the September, the December twelfth report.
And I appreciate the advice of recommending a cap of no lower than five, four-seventy.
Right.
Right.
Not, I'm not suggesting we go anywhere near that, but.
Yeah. And as I stated last time, if we're gonna create a cap, the problem is, you know, as David just pointed out, it's almost impossible to identify a cap that you can have high confidence in. So my perspective in these situations, you start looking at ranges, right? What's the low end of the range, what's the high end of the range? Are you comfortable in all of it? Are you not comfortable in some of it? You know, I was, you know, comfortable up to, you know, the option B amount. So my, my concern is, is you just don't want the cap to be, look back on it and have it be too low, that's all.
Agreed, but again, the risk in the project is in the first, what, three to five years? Which if we're concerned about the viability, then we need to change the percentages. Once we get into the out-years and the project is successful, it makes the project more profitable.
Yeah, I'm not concerned.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't conflict with the viability of the project. Abatements, in their principle, are to get projects off the ground.
Yeah, with an abatement, the viability issues, I just, I just have to have confidence that the developer can sustain and make, make, make a business viable. Again, I'm not looking at what's the point of profitability. Viability to me is once you decide that you're gonna implement a cap, you want that number to be fairly accurate in terms of what you're saying is gonna be the tax return. I mean, the, the value of not having a cap is basically you can't be wrong. I mean, you can look back and say, maybe you don't necessarily like where it ended up, but you can't necessarily be wrong. And the risk of, of being too high or being too low is, is actually borne equally by the developer and the town. Once you say that this cap is gonna be at X, then you actually have the risk of that being wrong disproportionately to the developer as to the town, as, as well as to the town.
Oh, and I appreciate that.
So what would be a number, I mean, if my number's too high, someone else put out a number that makes sense. I'm just pushing the lower end of it up a little bit, that's all.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I was comfortable with the five last time. I mean, I'll squeak up to the five-oh-five. Again, my point, and I, I hear what you're saying, Chris, but, you know, again, the risk from our standpoint is if we don't set the cap, we are giving away more tax dollars than perhaps we should or that the community needs in the out-years. And again, if this project is not going to happen without this, the point is to help finance it, get it off the ground and have it contribute. Because as, as some members on the Board of Finance might not have understood, it, it's not like we're giving away money for projects that are gonna happen anyway. This project needs this financing to get off the ground. Otherwise, there's no point in doing an abatement because we're just giving away tax dollars for nothing. This, this project, as, as others potentially do, they need the gap financing to, to get off the ground. That's our funding mechanism here. The exposure for the developer and the town diminishes in the out-years. And so, and I appreciate that. I'm willing to take more risk in the, in the, in the certainty years, in the earlier, and I'm even willing to change the percentages if that's needed to help the developer get this project off the ground. But at some point, to me philosophically, we need to draw the line and say, we are only willing to commit X number maximum of tax dollars. It's, it's a philosophical argument for me, I'm just.
Which I bought into.
Not willing to give any, anything more than X. And I'm also thinking, but let me just, I'm also thinking about with additional developments, I think we need benchmarks. And we don't really have a lot of these. And if there are other projects and we get asked for two million dollars and we don't have a cap here, how do, you know, how do we look at things equitably across this if, if, you know, there are other things that happen? So I'm trying to think about the precedent that we set here as well, in terms of, you know, how do we do this? I wanna be fair to the business community, I wanna be fair to the folks that take risk. I appreciate the historical nature and I wanna do that, but I also answer to the taxpayers. And I need, to me, I need to have some certainty in how much I'm agreeing to give. And I need, to me, I need to have some certainty in how much I'm agreeing to give, is how I come at it. So from my standpoint, five-oh-five is where I'm at at this point.
Yeah, I don't debate the mechanism, I think that number's a little low personally. So I'll let others kinda speak to it at this point.
Well, I was looking at it, and I think the benchmark, or the cap, however you wanna think of it is, is important, because down the road, this is our first real challenge in this arena with tax abatements. We've done them in the past, but they've been really sightwork, so they really have not fallen into this. I am comfortable with the five-forty, I would not be comfortable going above that. And with a cap on it, I think that gives the developer uncertainty. They know what's going on, you can help get the project going. And hopefully, this becomes a non-issue, because in five years, everything is wonderful. And that's my personal hope, but I also think it's fair to the residents of the town, too.
Mm-hmm.
So... I'm supportive, I'm in agreement with Mike. But when Mike zeroed in on the option three, which gave us that, gave us the range, and when I saw the assessor's revised memo to us, and then that, that matrix there, I feel that that is something that I can live with because there's no way I would, I would just, there's no way I would support a four-seventy cap, because that's the absolute minimum.
True.
And our assessor says that's, we'd be hamstringing the project. So we know, we know the number is somewhere between four-seventy and the good wishes, the wishes of the good people in the audience. And the fact that we've come back with this, an educated position by the assessor, and that number is in there at the five-forty, I feel comfortable with that. And that's why I sort of out of the gate showed him the cards and said, "I like the option range." And I think it's a fair number that allows Chris some leeway there, we could get to, right?
For them to be, have to be project workable.
I think that number also allows us to have essentially a hundred percent abatement for what our assessor has projected to be the actual taxes for the first few years of the project. And that in itself is, is a help to the applicant.
Yeah.
And that is the intent of this, is to, in those first few years, to allow them as much flexibility as they need to get the business going. So I could, I could support that.
Okay. Chris, any thoughts in particular on the five-forty?
I can support that.
Sean, that's a bit higher than you were originally thinking.
Again, the only thing I'll say to my peers up here is, you're not changing anything for the first seven and a half, eight to eight years of this project. Five-oh-five to five-forty, there is no difference for the first seven and a half to eight years of this project. You're treating it exactly the same regardless of what it's assessed at. So only in year eight and a half, nine, ten, are we talking about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Differential.
Unless there's a huge increase in the value of the property and we cap out.
And again, then it's not, but my point is that it's not needed.
Yeah.
I'm not...
But I think the whole premise of the declining percentages is we share in the benefit and we share in the risk.
Yeah.
I agree with that, but you can't make the argument of gap financing and then make the same argument of benefit and risk at the end. It's either gap financing, or it's not. Either this project needs the abatement to get off the ground, or it doesn't, and we're giving away tax dollars. Maybe I'm being oversimplified on that, but, again, because if it still needs an abatement in year nine and ten, this is not going to be viable.
Well, let's be look at the, I'm sure that the scholars are gonna continue to invest in the project.
It does give both sides some certainty in planning for those out-years also.
I mean, I highly, I mean, I, I don't see them, I hope that you don't stop investing in the project. And that in that years, nine and ten, you're still, you're still investing in that project. And there's still an outlay of cash, and it's that way with its personal or its financial, or whatever it may be. Whether you're gonna renovate the product, whether that restaurant becomes so awesome that it's completely worn out and needs to be renovated again, and it's going to be, I hope, this continued investment. And then the slate roof is gonna need to be replaced, and the copper cutter's gonna be replaced, and this is gonna be...
Not debating it.
Well, I will see if there's a motion, effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to approve the requested ten-year tax abatement at the percentages presented below, with a maximum total abatement cap of five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. Further move to waive fifty percent of the cost of the construction, HVAC equipment, plumbing, electrical, fire sprinkler, and demolition permit fees incurred by the property owners, and further move to authorize the town manager and the town attorney to negotiate an agreement reflective of this resolution.
Second?
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. This motion passes five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking this on.
Hope we can do it right.
Sure will.
You will.
You had a great turn.
And if you haven't been into the building recently, the windows have gone into the annex. You have a tremendous view of the church across the street. But the million-dollar view, is you can look out the windows of where they have the events room, if you will, and you look at Ensign Bigfoot, and you see the history of this community, and the way the whole, all the buildings are set up. It's like a postcard for Christmas.
Send me a picture.
Someone with a marketing bent, obviously.
That was today's...
It was absolutely gorgeous tonight, that's great to be in that, so.
Great. Thank you.
Look, guys, we're in the best place.
Finally, under selection action is a discussion regarding the sale of tobacco, nicotine, and vaping products. So the brief background on this is that there is a movement across the country to raise the legal age to buy tobacco and nicotine products from eighteen to twenty-one. There's been really nice research done by our town on this, looking at other communities, more than half of the communities in Massachusetts have already done this. Hartford recently became the first city in Connecticut to raise the legal age. And at least one other community in the Farmington Valley, Avon, has had a conversation amongst their council about possibly doing that, so. There is interest in Simsbury, if they do that, they have interest in Simsbury following suit, which is why they brought the issue to me. And that's why I wanted to have a discussion with the board, to understand if there's interest. I think there's, I'll frame this in three ways. Is there interest in encouraging our state lawmakers to take action raising the age from eighteen to twenty-one? Is there interest in us doing that locally? Or, and/or, is there interest in us regulating these products in other ways? For example, putting a ban on the flavored products, which is something that has taken place across the country? So I wanted to open that up for discussion.
Well, I'm not sure which one of those I wanna discuss first, but...
I wouldn't, let me just say, Community for Care, by the way, has done phenomenal work on this. And there's a video on SCTV's website of a forum that you did last year.
Like on the dangers of vaping?
Yeah.
And, and I am completely on board with the fact that vaping products do not belong in the hands of teenagers. And I think that the marketing of electronic nicotine delivery systems to minors is shameful. It has resulted in the increased percentages of children smoking, which have been on the decline for twenty-five years and are now increasing. Which, as, you know, as society, we have worked very hard to discourage smoking for public health reasons on all levels, right down to smoking in the car when you have a child in the backseat. And I think that, you know, smoking is a dangerous habit that, you know, should be regulated. That being said, the federal government, the FDC, is already working on a ban for flavored vaping products. I believe the proposed regulations are now in the comment stage. So we are going to see that. They have asked for some voluntary restrictions from the manufacturers, so that is coming. Now, the hard part of this is the age. I am, as a parent, I'm of three children, my youngest is nineteen. I'm curious as to when somebody becomes an adult, because, you know, I have a son who now is registered for the Selective Service, who votes, who has his own medical records, is responsible for his own educational records, who incurs debt to finance his college education on his own. And to tell him, and while I tell him, you know, every time I see him, smoking is bad, to, to say that it's against the law for him to do that, I think is somewhat insulting to his status as an adult. So while I understand that the motivation that to so-called move it out of high school is not particularly persuasive, because I think that it's going, it's there anyway. You can buy more dangerous substances at our high school than I think anybody here could possibly imagine. None of which would have to do with vaping, but... So, you know, we changed the drinking age to twenty-one because of highway funds and a push to diminish drunk-driving fatalities. And as a society, we have had success with that. I think we have had success with reducing smoking rates, too. The thing that is pushing that back up again is vaping. So I am more focused on that as an issue than tobacco products, because kids who start vaping are going to be smokers. The majority of them are going to try another smoking tobacco product. And some of them are going to put other substances in those electronic nicotine devices that are not nicotine and have additional addictive qualities and dangers. So, you know, I have, while I understand the motivation behind it, I, I am concerned that we have created a class of pseudo-adults who, while we expect them to do very responsible things, like vote, and fight our wars for us, and maintain their own adult lives separate from us, that to try to control this habit, I think is somewhat misguided, but...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I just wanna, this was explained to me, I said, "Why twenty-one? What's that gonna do?" And it was explained to me that it's, it basically helps to keep it out of the high school, because if you're eighteen, you could then buy it for someone who's seventeen or sixteen. I just wanted to bring it home for why, you know, why twenty-one?
I totally understand that, but who thinks they don't drink in high school?
Yeah.
It's been twenty-one for, you know, most of my life, and...
But to the point you just made, that's, it's also raising the drinking age to twenty-one has decreased precious.
Yes, but you would, if you ask, like, the consortium of university presidents and stuff, they are asking that it be lowered again, because now they have this tiered system in colleges, which, because the drinking age is twenty-one, now they have some people who can drink and some people who cannot. And the binge drinking has increased because kids who are not twenty-one are gonna drink as much, as fast as they can, before they walk out the door to go somewhere where you have to be twenty-one to drink. You know, they've had more deaths by alcohol poisoning, more, I mean, yes, it has helped the drunk-driving thing, but we have educated around drunk-driving. We have had a concerted public health initiative around drunk-driving that does not have to just do with how old you are, so...
Yeah. And Cheryl, I really, you know, I particularly value your opinion on this, because of all of us, you know more about this issue than anyone.
And I live it with my kids, I mean, I have two who are now over twenty-one, who I'm...
I just have a question, so to me, the, like with other discussions we have, the root cause of the problem is sixteen-year-olds, seventeen-year-olds are acquiring a product that they shouldn't acquire, either by purchasing it at a location in our community, or being given it by someone that purchased it. Why don't we attack that? I, increased levels of enforcement, fines, I mean, if that's the problem, I mean, changing the age, does that actually solve the problem? I don't know, but if, so again, do we do increased enforcement, increased police activity? This is a place to, again, no debate that it's a problem. But, you know, and I was somewhat tongue-in-cheek before, but, you know, we've also got an opioid problem. Should we mandate that you have to label your opioid prescriptions individually in this town, so we know who's selling to who? I think that's a far better usage of our dollars than, than this discussion, honestly. I mean, you know, we pick and choose what's fashionable, somewhat from a news standpoint or from a national standpoint, but I wanna actually solve the problems. We've got kids and adults dying of overdoses, we've got kids smoking, you know, pot and otherwise, yet we have a marijuana facility in the community that we all close our eyes and turn our backs to. It's like, well, that's okay, it's medical, it's different. Medical marijuana shows up in the distribution?
This stuff is, has nicotine in it.
Agreed.
Extremely addictive product.
Which is legal.
I think that there are...
Some of it does, some of it has the active ingredient from marijuana in it.
I don't, I'm confused and conflicted, you know?
Well, who's that?
In the sense that most of the actions that we take in society now, I think, well, not more than we reflect. First of all, Mr. Back, you know, if you increase the age to twenty-one, I'm over the age of twenty-one, so this doesn't impact me. Okay? I have children who are under twenty-one, who I never want to use these products. So selfishly, I'm looking, that's where I am. But now I have to think about, well, either the parents who want their kids to smoke, I don't, I get to bet that, leprechaun. And/or the person who is eighteen and is a smoker, is going, or is nineteen and is a smoker, and now you change the dynamic for that person, that's their life choice, or whichever it is. Most of the, I think the changes that have been made were made around products that can hurt you, physically can hurt you. I know that alcohol can kill you ultimately, overconsumption of alcohol. Smoking, I believe, and now it causes, you know, it's proven to cause, the carcinogens have proven to cause cancer, which ultimately could kill you. You don't know that, you can't say smoking kills you, you know? Don't know that. I don't believe that nicotine has been proven to be a health hazard unto itself. I think that the mode, the mode of which you consume the nicotine or receive it, is what is the health hazard, right?
Nicotine is an addictive drug. It stimulates the same nerve centers in your brain as taking some drugs.
But I don't know that, I don't know that that actually, so we make public policy changes because we know, we decrease, we wanna decrease sugar, because we know sugar can lead to diabetes and then more obesity, and those would be great further costs to society, whichever. But I don't know that nicotine in to itself is actually, could limit or hurt somebody's lifespan. That's, so, I wonder if, but the vaping is what is encouraging kids to move or...
It's the gateway, so to speak.
That's the gateway. So I would be more inclined to review the impact and limitation about how vaping makes its way into our children's hands versus just the cigarettes, because the cigarettes are, like, cigarette, you're gonna find a cigarette, and so you're gonna find somebody to sell you cigarettes. If you want cigarettes, you're gonna get the cigarettes. That's Sean's point, right? But if we can eliminate the vaping from our, our school systems and not encourage the sale of the flavored ones, which are the gateways and all that, that's where I would see, I wanna see our efforts. where I would see, I want to see our, our efforts. Not, I just, and I need, I need more discussion around.
The statute that has been proposed by the state of Connecticut, which didn't make it out of committees this year, but was approved by the Public Health Committee, and I'm not sure if it came out of financing, but it's sure to come back. And it includes vaping products, electronic nicotine delivery systems in the statute. And that statute proposes that the entire state move to twenty-one.
Yeah.
And I think Massachusetts has the same. Did they, the governor sign it in July or did they?
So all I.
I lost track of that, but.
Yeah. So all I saw were the individual towns and cities from Massachusetts that have signed on.
Massachusetts, the state, is, is doing the same thing that we are.
Which is ironic because they just legalized marijuana.
Exactly. But that's a whole nother discussion.
But they're different issues because marijuana isn't addictive or a gateway to other things.
I've got some friends, I've got some friends who I can show you.
You really want to go there?
I'm not sure we want to go there. Anecdotally, no. So the, you know, one of the, and one of the things that's interesting on here is that I, I am cognizant of the, but to our citizenry and to our business community is that, you know, when you see these submissions, it says financial impact and it says none. But there is actually a financial impact. In the sense that there's a financial effect of the business owners who support these products. And that's, and that's something that can't be ignored either. I'm not.
I don't care about the financial impact to a business that sells things, and I want the cameras to move in on this, that sells things that look like this, that are clearly being marketed to people under the age of eighteen.
Well, the F D A has already banned that. So now they're in.
But it's illegal to sell it to people under eighteen, Eric.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
But they're being marketed to people under eighteen. So eighteen-year-olds are then buying it and giving it to younger people.
Well, to Sean's point, then you need enforcement.
The law needs to be enforced.
And they're.
Changing, changing a crappy law doesn't make it better. We, we need to, you need to pass a law that works. So should we ban the sale entirely?
How are we going to enforce an eighteen-year-old giving it to their seventeen-year-old classmate?
Are we going to enforce a twenty-one-year-old giving it to their younger brother or sister?
An eighteen to give to a young.
Besides, you can buy it on Amazon.
Yeah, you can buy it, yeah.
Well, you know, the difference is.
There's no age check.
The difference is that you have eighteen-year-olds, you have eighteen-year-olds in high school.
Mm-hmm. I agree. I, I get, I get the premise of the argument. But I guess my point is to Sherri, in, in that if we're gonna, if we view this as a public health crisis, then ban it entirely. We'll just pick an age and then let the twenty-one-year-olds die of it. Ban it entirely. It's kind of like gun control. Either you're all in or you're not at all.
I think we can take common sense. I mean, I, I think.
Common sense doesn't work in this country. Either we're gonna protect people from themselves.
I don't want to conflate these with other issues.
But there is. I mean, you, you, you can't pick and choose which one we want to nanny and which one we don't. I mean, New York passed, what, the soda ban, right? Where the soda tax, where they nanny their.
And it works. It leads to people drinking less soda.
No, it doesn't.
At least they're buying it outside of the city.
We've raised the sin tax on cigarettes in this state nearly every legislative session. And that has not contributed to the decline in smoking. Education has. Is it, what is it, four dollars a pack for a tax now? Smokers still pay it. It is not a deterrent. It's a way to raise revenue. It's not a way to, it's not a way to stop smoking. The biggest change to smoking is C V S decided to stop selling cigarettes and started selling nicotine patches instead. Because they realized they were a health entity and they probably shouldn't be getting people addicted to nicotine. So.
Yeah. So the, the vaping, the, the big issue from my perspective is that it's already illegal for anyone under eighteen to have it, to possess it, including the machine. That is a huge problem in, that I have seen on the juvenile review board from junior high school to high school. Kids all over. What many of them don't realize is the primary component in many of these, I'm not even talking about the ones with nicotine in them or anything else. It is the chemicals that they addict you to, and many of them are glycol-based. Glycol is what they make antifreeze out of. And these kids are inhaling that.
I mean, that's why, I, I'd rather see, I'd rather see us legislate, oh my gosh, I think I said that. I'd rather see us address the issue of the vaping and the access to that versus just saying that no minor, nobody under the age of twenty-one can buy.
Sure.
Because, no, I, I don't think that in town of, I think very few kids in the town of Simsbury think it's cool to smoke cigarettes. It's just not. And I, I don't think that generations going forward will think it's, at least around here, will think it's cool to walk around, you know, down the next sidewalk that we pave and not gonna be smoking from, you know, down to Firetown, down to Starbucks. But I do think that there's something about vaping and the flavors and all that that is terribly attractive to a, to a kid. And I think that is something we could probably hang our hat on and say is something that we can, we could, we could, we could, we could put roadblocks in place to make it more difficult for them to find that product and then find the, the path to using it and the path to whatever it does create for them.
Yeah. Let's solve the problem.
So.
But the federal government just did that.
Yeah, but we could accept, we have the, we have, because it has nicotine in it, correct? We have the ability here to.
Well, some do and some don't.
I thought all the flavored ones had.
Nope.
No?
Not necessarily the crap you buy on Amazon either.
Yeah. You can also buy it on Amazon and it's merely a checkbox that you're eighteen and you agree to that.
No, no, I'm sorry.
So Chris, just so I'm understanding, are you proposing a, potentially a ban on, on, you know, any vaping products?
I'm preventing the, I'm, I'm proposing that if we're thinking about moving the sale of nicotine products to age of twenty-one, which is what this, which is what this says, and we have the ability to do, that we not, we not say make nicotine products, but vaping products.
So ones with T H C and stuff in them are.
Yeah.
So I put this on the agenda because I wanted to gauge the board's interest in, in either, you know, lobbying state lawmakers to take a particular action or potentially doing something locally. And I'm hearing.
Well, I think they already have. I mean, the, the legislation is already proposed and it's been moving through committees. So I think this is sort of, you know.
You're saying they're gonna.
The gates are already open.
You say they're gonna take, they're gonna solve the problem for us? You, you believe they're gonna solve the problem for us?
I think it's going to be a statewide ban.
I mean, to me, that's more effective than each individual town.
Agreed.
I know. Because if we do it, they're just gonna go to Granby and buy the same thing. So what have we done?
I mean, the bill is cosponsored by forty-three senators and representatives. I mean, it's got substantial support. And in the short sessions, if the bill doesn't have a fiscal impact, they don't, they typically don't take them up, which is probably why this wasn't taken up. Now that we're in the long session, I would suspect that this will get taken up.
I would agree.
And again, it's, it's far more effective for, if Avon does it this way, and Simsbury does it this way, and Granby does it this way, much like other things that I've debated against, we nickel and dime our way to it, and then we all leave loopholes and it needs to get fixed.
Yeah.
Let's do it right.
And we discussed when we did, had the Farmington Valley Collaborative Meeting, that if we, you know, did anything as a region, that we would develop a model ordinance so we wouldn't be inconsistent.
I withdraw my idea of that.
But I'm, I'm hearing, no, I, I appreciate the discussion genuinely. Anything else, Mike, were you gonna ask something?
I, I think I am concerned about putting Band-Aids without fixing the problem. And as the, the one individual up here, and this is not a brag at all, I have a, because I have a commercial driver's license, when I go out to have a beverage of choice, I am at fifty percent of the legal limit as every single person here, every single adult.
So you're point four, point oh-four.
Because that's the law. I accepted that when, when I got my commercial driver's license. And those are the rules and you gotta play by them. I don't want to end up with a situation where we have different rules in different towns. I really think that's bad. And I think we need to address the problem, which is the vaping, which is, in my opinion, the way the tobacco companies are trying to get the next generation. And everything we've seen on the juvenile review board has, this is a huge problem. And unfortunately, now we're not seeing it because it has become a ticket as opposed to just breaking the law. Turn out the kids that do the vaping and go to high, just pay a ticket. Mom and dad pay it, move on. I'm not sure. That's good, but that's a separate discussion for a separate evening.
So Mike, when you talk about solving the root of the problem, and Sean, I'm hundred percent on board with that, is there a place for us in that solution? Or do we feel that the state is on the right track with this issue?
It could be. I mean, again, if, if the six of us feel strongly enough that this is a public health crisis and we don't have faith in the state or the federal government, and we have the power to ban the product, then don't pick an age, ban the product. But, and we live with the repercussions of it, and we hold our head high knowing that we've done a public service. But if we don't have the stomach to do it for all of our people, then I, I don't, I don't like picking and choosing arbitrary age just because in the, you know, in the sixties or seventies or whatever, the federal government decided to hold it over our head for federal highway money that our highways are still crappy.
We're also putting a great deal of strain on our police officers who sit at the high school every day and at the middle school, where it happens to, and watch kids vaping from things that look like a flash drive, things that look like a pen, things that are in their lunchbox, things that, it, it happens in the classroom, it happens in the hallways, it happens in the bathroom, it happens outside the door.
Yeah.
So you would be, you know, asking our police officers to essentially clamp down on those, which, which is fine if that's your intention. But, you know.
I don't know what the answer is, but if, if it's deemed that that's, it's that much of a public health crisis, then why wouldn't we do that?
Is there interest on this board to?
I don't know if it's that much of a public health crisis. I mean, I do know there's an opioid public health crisis. And again, I'm not trying to mix issues, but people die from that.
Yeah.
And we're not passing ordinances for that.
No.
Our next community for care program, January ninth, is going to have, yet again, we've done this program before, but we're not doing just the dangers of vaping, but we're having our S R Os bring in a pile of paraphernalia that they have confiscated from our students at our schools to show parents what it looks like. Because I, I think most parents wouldn't know it if they saw it right now.
It's very deceptive. Yep.
It is. It is. And.
And it's also much more odorless than people.
It is. You can't even tell. I mean, it used to be with smoking, if somebody was doing it in the bathroom, you would know.
Yeah.
This, you can do in the classroom and nobody knows.
I wrote in an elevator where the guy worked the other day that busted out his vape in the elevator. I mean, it's, it's, the whole culture on it is changing. People are doing it everywhere.
They're doing it to high school when the teacher turns around to the blackboard or smartboard now.
It's crazy.
But by the time they turn back, they're done.
They're gone.
I mean, it's.
It's in their, they've put them in their socks, in the backs of their shoes, in their, you know, their lunchboxes, whatever it is. So I think that we need to educate our parents, who need to educate their children as to the dangers that are involved with doing this.
Yeah.
And, you know, just because you can arrest an eighteen-year-old at the high school is probably not going to stop the fourteen-year-old, you know, from doing it. So.
At the end of the day, Eric, I, I struggle up here because what's our role? We could, we could pass a lot of ordinances. We could direct police to do a lot of things. It's, and I struggle. I don't know what, I don't know what to tell you here because are we gonna pick this one because it's favorable? Are we not gonna pick, keep bringing the opioid one up? You know, what's our role here? Our role is to provide, you know, roads, schools, public safety, culture, parks, recreation, generally, you know, down the list. Does this fall under that? Maybe, under public safety? Maybe not. I mean, there's, there's an F D A, there's a Congress, there's a, I mean, are there other bodies that can do it? Do we let them do it? Do we not? You know, it, it's a tough question, but there are, there are hundreds of these issues that we could insert ourselves in. You know, again, we turn our back on marijuana and we want to deal with vaping. We, you know, are we doing enough on opiate? You know, again, it's a philosophical debate that this board will always have, but I'm not sure that the six of us can ever be educated to the point with the resources we have available to us to make an impactful decision is where I usually come down. We have a town engineer, we have a culture person director, we have, you know, folks that are educated on certain topics. With all due respect to town staff, we don't have anybody educated on this topic. They can, we don't have doctors and scientists and research and we don't have that information available to us. I'm not suggesting we pass on it because of that, but it makes our duty even harder than the number we just debated on a, on a tax abatement, whether it's right or wrong.
It does.
We have a guy that we pay to do that and we didn't even listen to him. But.
We do have is a, is a study.
We did.
University of Michigan.
I gotta bring it back around.
No, it's good. I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap this, but the University of Michigan, this just came out this week, did a, a survey of forty-four thousand teenagers across the country, and they found that on most measures, things are moving in the right direction, be it cigarettes or, or alcohol and other things, but vaping was the thing that is increasing and increasing the fastest. My biggest reason not to want to take action locally is because I, I'm just not sure how effective it's going to be when you can go to a town three miles away and buy the product.
Right. I'll stand corrected. I withdraw all my points before. This is.
You're supposed to do that, Chris. I remember what you said.
Blah, 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 blah.
Let the record reflect that Chris Peterson wasn't even here tonight.
Yeah. I, I didn't, I, and I didn't see the, how recent the committee meeting, committee vote was in the state. I apologize for that. So it would clearly say, and I, I, I agree, piecemealing here is being consistent, being part of the Valley Consortium, thinking like that's important. Having a, having a, having, having half of, half of an ordinance that the town next to us has a floor in, that's, that's, that's a horrible idea, Chris. And the, the, I mean, twenty-two to four in the public health committee to, to push, in the Senate to push it. I mean, this is gonna happen soon.
It's coming. I'm just telling you, it's coming.
But at least we're on record here as not liking it. I mean, we're, we're at the forefront of at least addressing and talking about as a, as a public entity, leading entity.
Good. Well, thanks for all for the discussion. Appreciate it. Gonna move on now to appointments and resignations. Item A is appointments of Friends of Simsbury Farms board members. Is there a motion effective January one, twenty nineteen, to appoint ten members to the Friends of Simsbury Farms Board of Directors as presented with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty, including Mark Demming, Arthur Emmons, Ronald Patterson, Thomas Cross, Paul Simeon, Robert Ellis, Cindy Franklin, Jerry Tonner, Kelly Kearney, and Jeff Sunblay.
Some move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Is there anybody that doesn't represent the golf community on there?
Uh, Sunblay, I believe.
Okay. Good. We got one. All right.
Fair question.
Fair enough.
Okay. All in favor?
But it is.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. That motion passes.
It's Friends of Simsbury Farms. It's not, you know.
There's an ice shrink and a pool there, too.
There are. And basketball courts.
You don't play golf?
No.
No, we don't.
Fair enough.
Item B, is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to appoint Peter Van Loon to the Business Development Incentive Committee for the Economic Development Commission membership slot with a term expiring August thirteenth, twenty twenty?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. C, is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to appoint Donald Eaton as a regular member of the Conservation Commission with a term expiring January first, twenty twenty?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to appoint Terrence Fogarty as a regular member to the Police Commission with an expiration date of January first, twenty nineteen?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And is there a, a motion to appoint Terrence Fogarty as a regular member of the Police Commission for a full four-year term beginning January one, twenty nineteen, and expiring on January one, twenty twenty-three?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to appoint David Johnson as an alternate member of the Board of Assessment Appeals with a term expiring December sixth of twenty twenty-one?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to approve the expansion of membership slots for the Library Building Committee from ten to eleven members by adding one additional slot for a current library board of trustee or library Friends member?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to appoint Mark Orenstein as a regular member of the Library Building Committee?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Joyce Howard as a regular member of the Tourism Committee, retroactive to November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen?
With our thanks.
Yeah, with our thanks. Did you second, Chris?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Robert Hagney as a member-at-large of the Open Space Committee, retroactive to December eleventh, twenty eighteen?
Move that with our thanks.
Yep, with our thanks.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Is there a motion effective December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, to appoint Timothy Walzac as an at-large member of the Open Space Committee with a term expiring December second, twenty nineteen?
So move.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Uh, the review of minutes from our November twenty-sixth meeting, did anyone have any changes to propose? Okay, then those minutes stand as presented. Are there any liaison or subcommittee reports?
I'd just like to give a brief report from the Community for Care, although I think I've probably preached enough on my Community for Care. I know, Sean, I'm sorry. I got on my, my, uh, that is still there. Um, once again, I'd like to thank all the people who volunteered for Century Santa. Um, the Aging and Disability Commission, uh, came up with the idea, and the Department of Social Services, um, really ran with it, and it was a great, uh, joint collaborative effort. Um, we had, you know, probably sixty parents and children come through, and it was, it was the most moving experience for those who have had kids who have those type of issues to be able to sit with Santa in a, in a quiet, welcoming space, um, not waiting in line and not standing at a mall with everybody screaming, um, was just amazing. I mean, we had parents who were in tears, they were so happy that this could finally happen. And I thank everybody who had a part in making that happen. Um, so we would like to make it an annual event, so I'm, I'm hoping that the, uh, the two commissions involved will continue to do so. Um, also, um, I think I've already mentioned, but I'll do it again, uh, the Community for Care will be holding its next program on January ninth, and once again, we will be highlighting, um, drug paraphernalia, vaping paraphernalia, and other forms of delivery systems confiscated by our very own Simsbury students, um, by our school resource officers. We will also have, uh, the Director of Farmington Valley Health, and, um, one of our school psychologists will be on hand to answer questions, um, and to lead the discussion. So I hope people will consider attending to educate themselves regarding these issues that we have been discussing.
Yeah, thank you. I'll tell you, when I attended that, uh, session, I don't know, it was almost a year ago probably, really, really opened my eyes to it.
Hmm. I mean, that, that's, lots of people say that, you know, and I know I was one of them. You know, you just don't know what you're looking at sometimes and what the signs are in your own child.
Yeah.
You know, when to reach out for help and when to ask those questions, so I hope it will be informative again.
Any other, uh, subcommittee reports, Sean?
Do we wanna talk about the uniform change?
Oh, uh, we have under communication.
Okay, so we'll do it there. All right.
Okay. Anything else? Uh, let's move on to communications. Good segue, Sean.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. All right. So, just quickly, before we jump into the police communication, I did just want to, uh, draw your attention to an update on the EDC appointment. So, um, at their first meeting, uh, their members really stepped up to the plate and, uh, decided to take a number of leadership roles and liaison roles. Um, so we did just report out to you, uh, which members have agreed to be chair, vice chair, uh, liaison to zoning, liaison to design review. And then, as you saw this evening, uh, Peter Van Loon had volunteered to business development. So again, just really wanted to thank those, um, new commission members for just, you know, jumping right in and taking those assignments.
That's great, good stuff.
That's good stuff. All right. Also, under communications, I thought it would be helpful to give you a bit of background information, uh, in the event that you receive any questions about, uh, the upcoming change in police uniforms. So this is something that's been underway for some time. Um, staff has been working on it, the Police Commission has been involved in this. But we will be changing the color and style of our uniforms, um, for a number of reasons. Uh, I did ask the chief to provide a nice, high-level summary for you of some of the reasons, um, for those, uh, upcoming changes. Um, one of them is the gray uniform, uh, has been being phased out by more and more, uh, departments. So over time, there are really about two vendors that provide the gray uniform, and they've become very costly, and it also takes a considerable amount of time to actually get the uniforms. And sometimes we have officers, uh, waiting as long as three months to get, um, a piece of, you know, clothing, whether it be a shirt or a pair of pants that they've, that they've ordered. Um, the navy blue is sort of the standard, uh, usually turnaround time is very quick and can be within a matter of days. Uh, also, um, we had the officers test, um, some more modern uniforms, um, for functionality in, in particular. Um, and so again, uh, that's been underway for some time. The commission had endorsed the change. Uh, we do have funds available to roll out the change, uh, most likely in the upcoming calendar year. Um, but again, I think, well, some folks have seen probably the test uniforms out in the field. The whole department hasn't changed over to the new navy uniform, so again, just wanted to sort of alert you to the upcoming change in case folks had questions about why, why are we doing this, um-
Will we do a little educate, a little campaign?
Sure, we ab- we absolutely could. Yeah.
We're gonna construct a run, construct a run that, you wanna be in it, Sean, I know you wanna be in it.
I am not, I am not qualified to wear that uniform.
But is it gonna be the full model?
No, 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 come on, Charlie. Uh, no, just so people get comfortable with it, just they know what their, so they know what their policewoman or man looks like.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. Yeah, we can absolutely do that, and, I don't know, Sean, was there anything that you wanted to add?
No, I just think that makes sense to start getting it out there, start socializing it. Think about putting it up on Simsbury, Neighbors Unite, you know, all the typical places, so we don't get the website. Yeah, the website.
I think it's really important that people recognize who our police are when they see them, so, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. Agreed.
Absolutely.
Eric can push the button and-
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, all right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry about that.